Oui, Pib?
Oui!
Thank you. Kuna ngenfunku yale zama, mama, mamou.
Ma'am, ma'am?
Mamou. Ma kutulwa u national anthem. Siakta labantu banganya khas. And always the case abantu banyagaza yo siti bo mama. Si nyagazinje si funindwe sngayaz. Ma kutulwa in national anthem. Uma lapo ukoyo ngoba. Si bonukutuma uyapumu yange, uyapumu kange lama beke ache tinasi pizila. We must respect in national anthem. Only the red ends, eh, ne fighter ezichalayo. Zi nyagaza senza yonge lindo zithanda yo ngaku tulwa eh laan pat nyana. Niababona musina kukbebe nyagaza besenza. Kotwa tinanjie si shonipe in national anthem. Ume lapo umekona. Ifu panje, umela, kwa panje, o kwa se sonduin. Eh, sonduin imaba tula, uko siak tumisa. U manga panje, u mti koni nomfangele. Azate avule umnyango we sondo. Wando lukungena ngiyakta labantu siachaze kasinga bo mama. So I'm one of all mama namu and funukutabanyo mama. Tiba empower Risha on this. Ask you used kulinda banyo, ye, 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 national anthem, but we must get used to it. Eh, ufuma utatotoka?
When the national anthem is sang, please stay where you are. Stand still and stay where you are. Do not move about in and out. Let us all respect the national anthem. So that we can show that it is our national anthem and we respect it. Nobody should move about. Thank you.
Red ends, alright.
Only, only the red ends can move about.
The fighters.
The fighters are allowed to move about.
They are, yes. Angegen kulu me for now. As iyegele lapo klondau, si bongeke senikona. Siabulela, siakoli sana lababatu kilo. Baya kuyrong eh venue. Si bulile lukuti bazee utiko wabatuwala bazee balaa.
We are grateful that you came. We are very happy that you are here. And we are very sorry to hear that some of us got lost on their way here. But we are very happy that you are now here.
Si leitika kulu ke so sex fanele si kichi meke. Eh, si lekis kati sengabambilili abantu apa e woli ikashelite.
We are very late. We are going to try and be quick to finish. So that we do not delay other people.
Ne storm si wonishi ukuti sengabakona. Already se si figile koma western cape. Siabono kutikune floods kwezi nyindau. So na ti sengafigelwa i flood isela e ulu insongi.
We also have been warned that there may be a storm. It has already started in the western cape. And we've seen that there are floods somewhere. And we do not want to be affected.
Mas kala si zaziseke, ika malam ti Nongo Simvana?
Let me, let us introduce ourselves. My name is Nongo Simvana.
Eh, ndibu ya eh eastern cape?
I come from the eastern cape.
Eh, iKovita ika hambi bato. Maybe namtini patelege yo onage na uko.
Covid nineteen is still here. It seems I, I brought it here.
Ni zwa ukuti inkwachila kanjani. So sex fanele je nin kulule masinya la two hours only with.
As you can hear how I am coughing. So the two hours you, you will have to bear with me.
Niabonukutiba yakuzabo. Mara, the fact of the matter, iKoviti iko. That's why si chesila e uluini si senza it is social distancing. That's why fanele singa kubekeki more than two hours. That's why kufuneka yonki regulations si fulena mankango. Fanele si fulena ngapa if necessary. So that umoya uflowela e uluini. Kotwa kona kona, sfunele singa isahabili ndaba ukuba u disclose ukuti, I am, I have this. For now, ankaka, ankaka declareo ukuteha ukuti nayori. Tatukuti ifluunje. So I'm sorry for that coughing through the mic.
Yes, the fact is covid nineteen is still here. That is why even our seating arrangements here, we maintain social distancing. We fought, we follow all protocols of covid nineteen just to ensure that we do not infect one another. Eh, if the doctor has declared that you are covid nineteen positive, it's good that you let other people know.
Dilulungu lale committee, abayibiza portfolio committee yakwa social development. Di kwangu yenumtu obani swewu kuti ndikokele kole committee yakwa social development.
I, sorry. I am a member of a social development portfolio committee. And I'm also a chairman of this committee.
Za unika ke ama lunga abekekile yo azazi senau. So that sazani apa nijinikutusha woba.
Hand over to other members of the portfolio committee. And they will introduce themselves.
Amandla!
Power, Amandla.
Yeah, good morning.
Sanbonani.
Mora!
Sanbonani.
Sanbonani!
Good morning.
I'm Latisha Aris.
Nginku Latisha Aris.
I'm from George in the western cape.
Ngivela George eh nyagatho kapa, enjonalanga kapa.
I wolfe yale se. Khuya mora in hartlike, friendlike vialko.
I want to tell you, good morning, a warm welcome.
Pe here belangirike publikering. That gaan we're on skinders. Do you understand Afrikaans? Ya, os prad, ek had, ek. Ek leer yele fohogad Afrikaans prad. Ya, if I live here, all of you songe will speak Afrikaans.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. A warm welcome here where we are going to be discussing our children. I wanted to check if some of you understand Afrikaans. But if you don't, today we will teach you.
Yes. Ek wolfe yele se that yele gekomet. And danke that yele omge for onskinders. And weet that yele yet onskinders se belange opde art.
I want to thank you so much for coming. And I want you, to thank you as well for caring for our children. Because I know that you carry the interests of our children in your hearts.
And ek wolfe yele se, moni bangwees. Wane ronskinders gemolestier. And gerape worabaita. Om family and friende te protekni. Vandaari kinders is di layers van more.
And I want to tell you today to not be scared when our children get molested or raped. To protect them as their family members or even in your communities. Because those children are the future leaders of tomorrow.
Yalke insed, ugeren, ons wardeerdat. Baye danke.
For each of your inputs, no matter how small it might be, we really appreciate your info and in, in sets in today's meeting.
Sanibonani, nonke ekuseni.
Good morning to you all.
I game lame ningu Gizla Operman.
My name is Gizla Operman.
Gi sakomizi sase northern cape.
I am a citizen of northern cape.
Ngii lungi lalele committee, social development.
I am a member of this portfolio committee of social development.
We are here today with you to tell us how we can improve the Children's Act of 2005.
Si zela kunina namchlanje. Ukuse si zozo, nesche lukutisingau wenzaga njani ngono, lomteto kwa 2005 wese ngani.
There's a lot of gaps and challenges within the childcare and child protection services. And we're here with you today to identify ways to improve the bill. So that it can work for everybody on the ground. And therefore, we value and appreciate your inputs here today. I thank you.
Kuna ma ke benenze elele iko. Endabeni ukunagekewa kuingani, lukfigelwa kwa azu. Manje gesi funukbonukutigesi ngasenza kanjani sibengoni simo. Kuseke iingani kwa azu kutina gegeleke gale. Siabonake ngokutinkona sbeke pambili. Kuno ma yine ngaba uvoluenu, nzo ethula namchlanje.
Abshay!
Good morning.
Biturame nani je inuwa kama ngani?
Ika malam uje mangani.
Ne huma a northwest province?
Ngivela a northwest, esfunda zoinsase northwest.
Eh, little bit of Zulu or whatever kosa. Namdiyato kosa ubala.
I am happy to be here.
Eh, ngia kabanga kuti no ma sile number sekuyo sbanengeka kulu kutatis ngugu.
I think that the, the quorum that is present here is sufficient for us to make a decision.
Angichabakona labafundi Bible bati no ma nebatatu nebangaaki eh wesine uko.
Those who say, or those who study the Bible say, even if you are three, even if you are whatever, the fourth one is also present.
Manje, ubalule kile namchla. Umteto anuwes ni kuele insu yonge. But the number sekuyo, ni, 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 ni nentini soyoku ti, we, si zofigelela las, sfunakfiga ko.
You, you don't have to fill this hole to its capacity for you to be able to make the law. The number that is present should be adequate.
Lesi zulu nyana, les trasa, les benis kulum. Ni, ni, ni bega uma Vilaga zuguwe, amangfunda isan isizi.
This, this little bit of Zulu or kosa dida is big. It's all the fault of Mrs Vilagazi. She didn't teach me.
Sanbonani.
Good morning. How are you?
Ika malam u Bridget Masango.
My name is Bridget Masango.
Ngilulungu lalele committee.
I am a member of this portfolio committee.
Namini zulisa obonga kulu kutinisoba na ti namchlanje.
I just wanna offer my gratitude for you to be present in here. Thank you.
Sanbonani.
Good morning.
Ninjani.
How are you?
Ika malam ulisel Vanamarve.
My name is Lizel Vandermeve.
I'm also born in the western cape.
Nami ngazalelakwone western cape.
But I'm also a child of the Zululand district just up the road from here.
Kotwa genam ngazalelakwoso lisifu nda sa, sa, sa wazulu, sase Zululand.
And just like my colleague, I want to say thank you very much for taking time out of your day to come and talk to us today.
Njango basabe shilo na labo za kwe tse, senza nabonam. Ngianbongaga kulu ngokutintatis kati senu, ni zela si zo koto namchlanje.
We really value your time.
Siashlonipe is kati senu.
And we are a people's parliament. So what you tell us today, we will take to heart. And we will take it back to parliament and process some of the concerns. That you have got in this community around children's issues and social ills in general.
Si parlament de la bandu akokonke nzo gushola, si zo kubambisi sa, besesikbu isela yiparlament. Kusezo, nginge ipatelene neingani nompaga ti zigwa azu kuti kwa zulule.
So thank you very much. We look forward to interacting with you.
Si bonge kaku lusi beke pambi lektene ge si oknani.
Thank you very much, honourable members.
Si bongaga kulu ma lunga shonpegile.
Maybe it is also important to tell you that we have a backup staff. Abantu baskapayo, abazu sisa kwinto zonge esne, es tingusizo kuzona. Abawevishena, ababikhesengapa ya.
It is also important for us to let you know that we've got.
Abanye bangapanjle.
We've got members of staff who serve as our support structure. They help us with everything we need. Some of them are outside.
Si nazone interpreters etu nazoma zewevishé.
We also have our interpreters. They are waving at this point in time.
We hope that sina yuno nabantu be media. Bakona amongst us, as us kutenga ba pikota, they are here.
We also trust that.
Mapabugi senabo, abanyebakezi pa.
We have members of the media.
Si na wona malungo abu ya eh, eh department in yakwa social development, mabawevishé.
We also have officials.
Na abayed the beck, na ababanye, sino HOD wa kwa social development. Obahoka yo, obakokeleyo, apakame yena especially. Abonakali sukutubahale kona yena naati.
We also have officials from the Department of Social Development. This is the head of the department standing.
Eh, Nelsonwe eh, vanikochi? Vilagazi.
Her name is Nelsonwe Vilagazi.
Ya, soloko sikheli sina yene. Konane linie ilungu elbu yawa social development, national linie albona naloo.
There is another member from the Department of Social Development, National level.
Si wonkiwe apa eh, eh, ekaya. So sina lobobato. But because of time, angeke nditikis katis nize, namkele kili.
In the interest.
Namlo, nama lungu siyazamkeela apa ekaya.
In the interest of time, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna waste time. Let me just welcome all of you. We know that we are also welcome to be here.
Siyani bona nani niyasamkeela. So sekabili ngolwa amkelu, se samkelu, se skulene pachi naan siyani azbona. Apa enfakwiz tulusit.
We already feel welcome. Our coats are hanged behind our chairs. We know that you welcome us here.
Si za ungena kengoku apo si zele kona. Si cho ukuti, some members apa paki akati kuituzeni kala lukuti si zele i, i children's amendment bill.
Let's get to the discussion as we discuss this children's amendment bill.
Is shomelo, s, 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 somteto wabantuwa.
It is an amendment bill of the Children's Act.
Ni niki weke ama petchanya na apa pamkuenu, ukuti ni mane niskumbuza. If ani kange nibe niwafume ne apa luenge sin tu ozas understanda. Unakupindu upomeka ngani, uyo ztatele. So that uive kache kache ngakasani te tukti ni yonkele ndepamkuwa.
You have been given pamphlets to read and remind yourself, just to refresh your mind. Should you, eh, if you had forgotten maybe what is going to be discussed here. You can just maybe go outside and read it.
Ukuni kumbuza, ukuti, i, is shomelo esi eh, si, 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 si paula i, 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 imi tango kanye. Indau eztila apa gui, 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 children's act. Si paula indau eztila, asi chinchin i children's act. Mara, siyashomela izindo esbona ukuti because of time. And because of ukuti sibonile zikone zalele izindo. Enye yazo ile ukuti abo baba, babene responsibility ukuti nabo. Bangeti se ukukulisa abantuwa nababo. Singa tingo ba umtu u unmarried, o kanye u wenzakele ekaya. Simbekele kaleni for ukuti. Maringbona ngatwabo baba, abakola angazukuti kwenzenja. Maybe bedenga azukuti le, le, le bill i abangeti sa.
This amendment bill is not going to change the Act of 2005, the Children's Act. But it is going to highlight certain areas that need to be reviewed and improved. Due to the time in which we live. So now here, I don't see too many fathers around here. And what it also touches on is the fact that fathers are responsible also of looking after their children. Whether they are married or not.
Whether u, u divorcee, o kanye ukuis separation. Kotwa u baba une responsibility ukuti umtuwa na ani we ichansu naye. Angeti se kulisen umdan. Njengati bazali, abazala abantuwa na esine responsibility and right ukubakulisa.
Whether you are divorced or separated, fathers also have a right and responsibility towards their children.
Ukunza kake koko, ukuka, iya mkapazela naloo umteto we child marriages or reforced marriages at times. Nale doye, ye, 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 human or children eh trafficking. Abantuwa nabatuwalwa yo bemke ngengani, abanye bata iswe. Because weena, ubonukutingatumdanako angakanela gumuzine familyletile eh well of eh uzee. Utolelu ndoba umtengi sengemani, o kanyo umnyakati sumnyanse lukuti ayo ukane la la.
It also touches on the issue of forced marriages. When parents force their children to marry to certain families. So that they can perhaps benefit financially. And also the hu, the issue of children trafficking.
Kunabantuwa nage that esitando ukuti bashuli ukubakulisa. Maybe bashiwe ngabazali babo. And weena ubonanga ta ongeku kone ukubakulisa. Uyaba tatuya batengisa kulu mpufazu ofigayo or kulu family efigayo. Akunayo i process and procedure o ilande ele. Lumtuwa nuya felanje ahame. Asi when even abroad, kumazwa angapanjle. Ungaza, mazino kutuwapisa ngayegu. So leso zindole bill, iya zngeti sukuti sengenzeki. Ngengele ngafanile kile but silande le i processes and procedures.
The bill also seek to address issues of children who are being sold to certain families. Or to other countries where proper procedures are not being followed.
ICDs, lesi siti tinasin kuliso. Zinkulisa kwezi nyindau. Lapo abantuwa na sifumanisukuti siyazivula le zinkuliso, o kanye. Si, si bonukuti vipensine. So njengu vipensine je, uhenendo ukuti ufuni exit strategy yaku ibailend. Mara, unapeku ukuti lendau ofakekuyon abantuwa na. Ilungele na ukutabantuwa nabahlalele kuyo or bakulele kuyo or bakhalale kuyo. Worst part of it, ngoba u, 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 excited to open up this. Ngobuyayazu kutucholmentye uyangeti sa on that. Uhlanganisa zongi echisa zabantuwa. Kubeku ngaambingolo chobo. Kufanele ulande le imi tetwe tille so that uzo kwa azu register. And mai ngaregistoanga, sometimes unatoli luto. Of course, u department wa kwa social development, a delay yes sometimes naye. Ukukupa i stipend for educator zonge leso zindu. Iya zkapazela le bill, assiste ukuti zenseke kanjani. Kufanele zchin, siyashupega. Because a una anything yo kuwa azu kutukupule, le, 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 iCDiago. Mara eh, aulande langi mikome eh right e fanele kili.
The bill also touches on the formation of ECDs or creatures. Eh, as to what is required in terms of registration. And what the role of the social development department is in terms of that.
Nanze yeke abayibiza foster care otas. Eh, lena ke iya skupaka kulu. Sfunuke yala labantuwa na bashone loengu mta kuenu, bashone loengu kuz. Kuzinuako, bashone loengu kuinto mbiyako. Mara, uyazu kutikune, nko ubo kufanele uilandele. Eh, hamba io vaya ekot. Kubeko izindo ama pepa baliwe. Ap kutwayingunla ihlange ne nonunchalo. Wonke je umuntu o involve. Na uzo konu kumana i foster care grant for umdan.
The issue of foster care centers. And how to apply for foster care grants. And the proper procedure that should be followed in terms of courts application that is involved. The bill addresses that, that as well.
Naleke ye partial eh, eh, care centers ne, 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 nezi. Si sbisha drop, drop off centers sometimes. Apo ne orphanage, utika ubonabantuwa na be lokishyako, no kanyindau yaku hezi kuyo. Abapateke gale, ubonkutey itingba kokelele, nba fakena wumiye. Nale yo, excuse me, iphoneinje utateje uva, uvelu va falilela. Apo inakbambi saleo ndo. Kotwa if uhambe, wa i reporta ku social workers, zazu ubonukuti fanele kili vuloela. And then ikufanele uhambe i pinndau. Nayo iya kapazeleka la.
It also touches on these centers, childcare centers, drop-in centers, orphanages. It also gives a guideline as to what procedure to follow to open such a center.
I adoption. Tinage, siyamthata njumdanakatatu itu. Ashalela utingo wama umbisa. Kotu unazaha ngulandele i, i mi katango e fanele uilandele. Nayo ke iya kapazeleka ngoba ibalule kili. Ukuti uye nze ndichomi naloo, dinabantuwa nabazalepe ekaya enthi. Yonkinndau nditatabantuwa na. Mara, I never thought of fanele ndiye wa social development and reported this issue. Ukwenze lukuti iya hamba, all the lines is fanele kili. Di velanite, shame uya skupega, oh, aukonu kuya schoolenmu ya ozala ekaya. Dingayupali sakanti ke, we are supposed to follow the procedure. Si reporte kabonunchala, ngoba abantuwa nage iskatis ningi nguku. Siyaba tataswa falile samu, siba abuse.
And also the issue of adoption is also addressed there. It's, it's usual to perhaps, let's say, the sister, your sister has passed on. You adopt her children and then you stay with them. But there is a proper procedure that needs to be followed. The Department of Social Development should be informed about that. Social workers, it must be reported. You don't just take these kids and you stay with them without following proper procedure. So the bill is also going to address that.
Eo kinake, ile yo, yo kuti umaspala oh lala kuti or eshala viena nama councila. Ngoba siyayazu kutisbu yaku futi. So namchlanje ngatukune inauguration yabo, uzo bekwa nabomaya and everything. Fanele bati, ma kunenkingese infrastructure, ule center so uyfulile. Ngoba kufuneka ibene requirements le center. Ube na zo i ablution blocks, kube na yo everything ipanga lali ibene ndau yokala abantuwa na zonge zondo. Umaspala ke kfanele akseze. Akunikese even site ma uyile wa kela ukuti, bakunikese site. That's why ke fanele be balule kili lukuti sisabenze nabobonke. Of course, nabo health department nabo sisabenza nabo, nabo home affairs for repeat certificate. Esizto laganzima. Nema ITs yonge landu. Zonge it departments ne zize SAPP. SAPP, fanele sa zukuti kagune sort of i, 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 drug laws or kune eh substance abuse. Si reporte leso zindu maposen. So things, social development, all these things. Angeke sikua azu kuti sisenze zoto. Ota kufuneka sisenza ezo, unye nomdeini, usisize, uksngeti sa. Uyo yonke lindo sesibe kili. Ipela lapo gelepili, ibe iya zkapela ngani, iya zkapula izi, izi issuesi si, 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 si tetangazu.
Siyazi ke ukuti ke eh, even the local municipality and also the councillors, we know. We've just concluded the local government elections. We know that perhaps they are busy with inaugurations. They must come closer to the people in terms of assisting them with infrastructure. Things like infrastructure at ECDs and ablution facilities. Families also need to be involved. SAPS department, the Department of Health, Home Affairs Department. They may also assist with things like birth certificates, IDs and all that. And also the issue of substance abuse, drug abuse must be reported to the SAPS department. That is why SAPS Services Department should also be involved.
Na kuke ukwenze ka ingobo isa wangholsho. Ngoba si funa iskatis ningi sisnikenina. Mara, maniteta uku, uku kulumu apa kui mike. Ni fanele, nistale lukuti niyahambi sana naloo umteto sizenau na esisshomelo. Niyahambi sana naso offera, niyahambi sani naso. Before u wenzelo kokfanele u introjusetala, uchukutumba ni upuma kuki. Mara, indo si funa ntlela kuyona, ukuti izindo that are very sensitive and ibona ukuti. Aunge kutetenga zo kui mike publicly. La tafulale ya hezi ngapa ya. Uyakona ukipakama utwe twwe, uyekuyona. And then yu utetana bo izindo es sensitive, es personal o kanye. Oh, kale lukuti i committee, like dislungeli. Niboni lukuti bapumeka ngangoko, i management yaka mama unelisiwe iko na yakwa social development. Si funake ukuti, ota sine kumbuza ukuti today, si zele je lomshomelo seke, o kanyo lomshomelo, eh, le si shomelo umteto. So ukuti sine boni sukuti kana gui et, eh, kfanele lukuti ni, 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 ni sisabenzi or ni landele. Nibe na ni, na ni consultiwe nani. Because most of the time, abantu bata lukuti aika lo. Abantuwa nabase South Africa, bano umteto. And lomteto loli children's act iya balawla. It is not like that ai balawuli. Siti bazali esinyanze likile yo sbe ne parental, sbe ne responsibility for our, our kids. But je injela yo kwenze zindu, fanele si ilalele gale and also si ilandelele. Si funake ukuti, uba ubu yaku isekta etile. And uyabonukutiskati asengeke sbeko nuku ifunda yonke inuatile, o ipeteyo or i presentation. Utate ngoku i tata, uyisekona lapaya, kusisikonapaya, kipekapsapoti. Mara, utete, eh, okuno kuteta. Ose kuteti weke, siyakta lukuti kunga pinda pindwa. Njongo baseniteli skati, singa silihika kulu in terms of sipinda pinde indweni. Siza utelisantla gen. Ma uniki we ukutuso uteta, sikhala kwezi zulus lapai in the. Because you have to go through this. Because you have to go through this. You have to go through this. Because you have to go through this. Because you have to go through this. So you have to go through this. 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 Because you have to go through this. To come forward. You have to go through this. You have to go through this. Express her or himself, language are comfortable. Because you have to go through this.
This is how, this is how we are going to do things around here. You just raise your hand if you've got a point or a comment or a question. And then when you are called on, you will come to the microphone stand and you introduce yourself and you tell us the organization that you come from. If you've got a sensitive matter that you want to, 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 to submit to us, don't, and you don't feel comfortable to say it on the microphone stand, you can just go to members of staff who are sitting over there and make a submission. If you've got too many points that you've already written down, you can just feel free to take them to the members of staff as a submission over there.
Then you have to go there. Because you have to go there. So you have to go there. You smile. If you don't want to go there, quickly take your bag. Because you have to go there. You have to go there. You have to go there. Because you have to go there. You have to go there. You have to go there. Because you have to go there. 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 Because you have to go there. You have to go there. So please, you have to write. Let's see. You have to go there. We are small. Because you have to go there. So I'm saying, please. My job, I have to go there. Because you have to go there.
Please remember. Please remember that we are live on social media platforms like YouTube, Instagram, Twitter. As you can see, Letitia is already on YouTube. So just smile so that when the camera faces you, they will see that you are happy and you are smiling.
I don't like it. I don't like it.
And sit nicely.
All right. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
Please show your hand if you'd like to comment.
Is it?
Come forward, please.
I don't like it.
They will give you a seat.
Oh, you have to go there. I guess it's a valid meeting.
Oh, she is the only one. That means we will conclude the meeting early today.
Yes, all right. You are a son of God.
Greetings.
My name is Nom Sangobani.
Yeah, that's better.
I'm from Zamogulay Kresh, Nimsinga. I'm the chairperson there. Yes, I'm from Zamogulay Kresh, Nimsinga. I'm from Zamogulay Kresh, Nimsinga.
Thanks for giving us an opportunity today to speak about the kids who will fall under the Department of Education.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. If you figure, I'm trying to think one more. A C D, education. Because you have to go there. You have to go there. Because you have to go there. You have to pay. Because you have to pay. Because you have to pay. Because you have to pay.
What I want to know is that what will happen to people who are like me, who are over sixty, since the ECDs will fall under the Department of Education? Will I still be recognized? Or maybe somebody who has more education, a better education than me, will be the one who will be recognized?
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. As a crash, you have to go there. Because you have to go there. You have to go there. Because you have to go there. So you have to go there.
The second question is, since an ECD has a committee, what will happen to that committee? What will be their role after that?
Because.
That that question.
Because I have plans. I have a plan to go there. Because you have to go there. You have to go there. If you want to go there. Then you have to go through this. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. You have to go through education. Because you have to go through this.
And what I want to know is what will happen to the plans and the resources that the committee of the ECDs that we had? What will happen to what they've planned? Will they still continue with that?
Because. Because you have to go there. You have to go there. Because you have to go there. You have to go through education. And vaccination. Then you have to go there.
We want to know that teachers who are in the ECDs who have not vaccinated, will they be recognized by the Department of Education?
Yes, I'm glad. Yes, I'm glad. Because you have to go through this. Meeting, because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. And you have to go there. Whether you support or not. Yes, I'm glad.
We can see that we can just close the meeting now because we don't know whether the people from around here, do they support the bill? Or should we just close? What, how do you feel about the bill?
I would be very much happy. Because you have to go there.
I will be very happy if we can just finish our meeting in this manner.
All right. I'm glad.
Can we give you, please, ma'am?
I don't know.
Is there somebody who wants to say their view?
I don't know.
Did the lady who was speaking say that she supports the bill?
I support.
Yes, she does.
I don't know.
Is there someone?
I don't know.
None will continue.
Because you have to go there.
Do you want to raise your hand? Or you can just come up and sit up in the chair of people who want to ask question? You'll think about your, your point as you are sitting.
Because you have to go there. Okay. All right. You're smiling. Oh, I'm glad.
I will, you'll get an award for smiling, like, so nice. Greetings to everyone. My name is.
I'm from Mokapi. I'm from Mokapi. I'm from Mokapi.
My name is Bullem Gapi from Mokapi. I am a chairperson. I am a secretary there.
I have a representation. I'm going to talk to you. I'm submitting.
I've got points that I need to present, but I'm not going to cover all of them. I've already made a submission.
I have a amendment. Because you have to go there.
I do support the amendment bill?
As the WF, we have input. We ECD partial care NPO disability. Father's responsibility.
As the WF, we would like to make an input in terms of the ECD partial. What is partial?
Partial care NPOs.
Partial care NPOs.
Children with disability.
Because you have to go there.
Father's responsibility.
Because you have to go there.
Challenges. We have prominent challenges and obstacles facing ECD facilities. Include absence of learning materials.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. ECD. Because you have to go there.
Resources, infrastructures, sites, water, toilets.
Because you have to go there. And toilets. Because you have to go there.
Safety of learners and lack of qualified practitioners.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
We open creches at our homes where the space is not enough for learners to play and learn.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
Other ECD centers is difficult to register partial care to get funding.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
As we are an NPO running by community members, that other members don't have patience to run smoothly the facilities.
Because you have to go there. 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 Because you have to go there.
Other members come to destroy or jeopardize supervisors or principals' dignity.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
Other committee members are dropped out at their position to make the centers suffocated.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
Recommendations.
Because you have to go there.
Buildings of ECD centers must be able to accommodate all types of children and those with special needs.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
Government must ensure in ECD centers budget of areas in poverty, we plead the budget of infrastructures.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
Facilities, safety flush toilets, roads, water like gold and safety of our ECD centers as a whole are in a good standard.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
We play a huge role as ECD centers. We plead government to take us as a first priority because we are first step of a nation as we take learners from zero to four years to give them knowledge, skills, know about the world and their growth.
Because you have to go there. 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 Because you have to go there.
We plead funding to help to fulfill the needs of the children through play and learning.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
We plead government to add the act of an NPO running by community members to involve the supervisors or principals of the creches as the one who is always involved in the community members, not elected but always there as a supervisor, always at his sites.
Because you have to go there. 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 Because you have to go there.
The salaries must be realized. Practitioners must get full salaries to their job to get their dignity.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
The volunteer name to ECD centers must be approved by. They must call practitioners.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
Children should start earlier at ECD centers to prevent gender-based violence. Parents should be taught of taking very strong responsibility.
Because you have to go there. 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 Is that the last point?
Yes, I'm glad. The rest is submitted.
Thank you. The rest of my points have been submitted to members of staff.
I'm glad.
Hi, it's good that you tell them, you.
All right. It's above.
Can come up, sir?
I'm glad. Okay.
The last one?
I'm glad.
After that, we will answer your questions.
I would like to greet everyone who is here,
the honorables who are in front and all of people who are here.
I'm Patrick Matunjua from MVOTI.
My name is Patrick Matunjua from MVOTI.
Because you have to go there. All right. I'm Patrick Matunjua from MVOTI.
My name is Patrick Matunjua from MVOTI.
Because you have to go there. People with disabilities.
I'm the chairperson of that committee of people living with disability that doesn't get any benefits and NPO.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. But you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
I'm very happy that the ECDs will fall under the Department of Education, but what I want to know is what will happen to the people who are working in the ECDs?
Because you have to go there. 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 Because you have to go there.
Some of them who are teachers at the ECDs, they've never been trained. What I want to know is, will they get any training from the government? Or what will happen to them?
Because. Because you have to go there. 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 Because you have to go there.
The third question that I want to ask, it's about the ECDs for people living with disability. What will happen? Do they just employ? Because some of them, they employ people who know nothing about disabilities, who have no skills of dealing with people living with disability.
Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there. Because you have to go there.
I will be happy to hear from the government. What will they do about these matters that I've just raised so that we do not have any challenges as we continue?
Yeah, I'm glad.
Thank you very much.
All right. By the looks of things. We are supporter, Baba, of organ.
Do you support the bill, say, or what? I said.
We are supporter. Okay.
He supports it.
Mama, H O D.
Mrs. H O D, we are done. We have finished on time. Can you?
Move. Because you have to move.
Is there someone who wants to say something at the back? Because I don't see anyone.
Because you have to go there.
Can, can you come in front? H O D, there's no one?
I'm glad.
They said the point that has been mentioned, it shouldn't be mentioned?
Oh, same mention.
So it has been mentioned, so.
Twenty over twenty.
So you got twenty over twenty?
Yeah. You mustn't repeat this. It's been a pin in twenty.
We shouldn't repeat the same thing. I did say that.
Because you have to go there.
You can come in. you can come in front, HOD, so that you can answer? so we probably leave here around twelve?
I am a social worker, I am servants
there are social workers here, they are at work?
Mara HOD, most of them are social workers, just to introduce themselves
but to Miss HOD, we can just ask the social workers to come in front so that we can see them if they can just all come here in front? and they can also introduce their positions? it's difficult, yeah, you can't stand up?
the whole entourage may use my daughter
no, okay
yeah, in gokele yavikona eh, Mamunelsi we, it was easy to apply when ozani, but
you can come in front, please?
you're social worker ma?
are you a social worker? let's give you a chance? there's a chair just next to you, you can sit down
ladies
let them pass my costas
you will be left out, please remove your mask? good morning we are grateful to have parliament visit us to our district my name is Nelsi, Nelsi, anywhere from seeing us no Zolo Center
clamber we can add something
we request some time for us to go through these pamphlets that we were given perhaps we may be able to note where we can ask question and offer comments?
thank you so much for okay, guys, you need one minute
we will give you one minute
so, we need to put in the input Mara, the time being is a month ago, it's a month ago so that the month of Kumbula out of S points, there's sections is available so, guys, I see me apply, we can't give you time for, we need to fund for some few minutes Mara, you know, we need to use up me take eh, must agree deal we need to fund the government, we need to, nae, 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 da la, we need to
we will give you time to go through the content of that document but please ensure that when you have got all your points, once you have refreshed your minds and you've got all your points please make a submission, submit those points to staff members across there the reason why we give you one minute is because we know that you guys know this more than us you work in ECDs, you know the challenges that the ECD centers are facing, so you know better than us that is why we gave you the opportunity to come and present but if you didn't get time, we are very sorry that you are only getting this information now hence we are giving you time to go through the document, but once we are done, please submit it forward to the staff members since you are speaking about ECD, you may continue, may proceed, HOD?
since you are speaking about ECD, we need to fund the government
eh, my name is Nelsi Wevilakazi, I'm the HOD for the Department of Social Development in the province eh, I have with me management from the Department of Social Development management who are social workers by profession, most of them, and social workers eh, honorable chair, you said you'd want them to introduce themselves so may I give them this opportunity to introduce themselves maybe before we respond to the questions? eh, thank you very much, HOD, honorable chair, honorable members, greetings my name is Usetum Lalose eh, I'm the acting chief director for the Midlands cluster social worker by profession, thank you Sanbona Chairperson, honorable members
greetings to the chairperson and the honorable members and also the community my name is Delumosa Brenda Kulu
I'm social work manager in Umzinyati District
I am a social worker manager in Umzinyati District
greetings Chairperson, honorable members and community
eh, I work for Umzinyati District but for the Glencore Office greetings to the chairperson
I'm based a provincial office, I'm the chief director for social from the Department of Social Development to the Department of Education eh, it's a question that was asked by Uma, Uma Nsungusangubane, Gangenomnumza, no Patrick Matunjua eh, I think you need to apply, we need to eh, we need to introduce the ECD ya shift from what social development, yeah, what education we need to, in place, this is what we need to, that process, it be smooth in terms of shifting the function from one department to the other
I just want to mention that when the government shifts the ECDs to the Department of Education they have processes that they've put forth so that they have a smooth transition from ECDs to Department of Education
eh, government understand very well that the ECDs currently that we have are run by non-profit organizations the ECDs that we have are run by NPOs and they are, they are in different eh facilities some are in Ronda wells, some are under the tree, some are in garages you, so what is going to happen is that eh, the Department of Education as they take ECD they will take ECD function as is and then going forward, then the ECDs themselves, they will then be engaged on how government will improve the ECD eh function so at this point in time, there is a lot of work that the Department of Basic Education is going to do going forward with the, with the ECD sector so the Department of Social Development work very closely with the Department of Education we have already shared with the Department of Education the database of all the ECDs that are funded and those that are not funded, that are registered and those that are not registered we have also identified the funding, that allocation that was given to the Department of Social Development to manage ECDs, so that allocation has been ring fenced and the provincial treasurer is monitoring that, then is going to be eh, 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 sent to the Department of Education because the resources, they follow the function that include our social workers that were responsible to coordinate ECD as a function they will also be transferred to the Department of Education we have about sixty social workers throughout the province we are saying the allocated budget to the department with regard to the ECD that allocation has been ring fenced and is going to be eh, sent to the Department of Education and is going to be sent to the Department of Education.
Siti leso sebelomali ge esese nziwe, sizo thunyelwa umtrenimafa uguze si guazu, si guazu uki sizege, nama emnyangueni uwe zemfundo.
Enjengo basisebenza, ngatilo kusho ngazutzi. Njango basisebenza, sine mali ehi budget, tesniweye ona njongo umenyango ezoktutusogompa Gati epegele i program ehi ECD.
As we work, there is a budget that has been allocated to us as a Department of Social Development to look after our services and functions.
So sitige leo malile ehi sabelu eyoona. Sesi kekele zela isezokchinde ega imali ehamba injobo ECD iya uwa education, uhamba na yo le malile ebegati i allocate oka social development.
That budget that has been allocated is already protected and as ECD moves to the Department of Education, it moves with that budget.
Si no son tlalaga taba ama coordinator ba debesibenza nama ECDs na bo sesba identifyile uye yongi province no son tlalaga taba u sixty, abazohamba ni function by uwa Department of Education no April.
We have social workers who have been working as coordinators of the ECD. We have also identified all of them. We have about sixty of them. They will also be transferred in April.
Beseguti ge sengianga setkunene, Honorable Chair, Honorable Members.
In conclusion, Honorable Chair, Honorable Members.
With regard to ama engagements, we do have an engagement session within Ummzinyati district which is scheduled for the 30th of November. And then there is a summit that is scheduled for the 6th of December, but the council will be advised accordingly. We are trying our best to ensure that we engage everyone and we do this jointly with the Department of Education.
In terms of engagements that should take place, there are engagements that are scheduled to take place on the 30th of November this year in Ummzinyati district and also on the 6th. Everyone in the sector is kept updated, but more info will be provided in due course.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair, Honorable Members. We've tried to cover most of the questions with regard to ECD function shift, but I do have my colleagues here that will cover other issues. With regard to the umama ummusa, there was a question, what will happen if you are over the age of sixty? Kabamutibona, as I've said, the Department of Education understand everything because we've shared information with them. So they take you as is. Then they would start to work with you towards what they want to see as an ideal ECD program within the country.
Si iabonga ge malungo alonpegile nawe stalo onpegile ge ilokho ge benge chinja ngzopendula ngokondene ge no futuko lo kususogoma ECD la ekona alu la iswe la paya emnyangueni uwe zemfundo. Kotage ngokondene nombozo kamama ummusananglo buzuku tige labasebene imnyage ngaphezulu uwe ngusixti uzu wenzeka ningabo. Sitige masixveze lo ku kutige umenyango uwe zemfundo, bonka ba la paya uwa ECD inkulisa uzo ba tata benjengo ba benjalo. Kotoko besegbege masexibenza na buge uki ge dangalony swakanjani ba tutukiswa benze eba besesmones ngono ngaku.
Miss Luthuni will cover the issue of vaccination. Thank you.
HOD, ngifuna ubekliye uki. We know that there are policies even with Department of Education. Abazu abanisha their policies because ngoba u social development utate uvu. We all know uki wenzegela njanu in terms of going for pension. Akiri aboko fanele bohlala na bazu ngulu ngoku bangarresist. Abantu ana bayakale kaya, bayatu ka, bayabiwa. So lendole ezima ezantata as it is, njongo becho hod, kotoma ufika la paya uza ubaindoa zee policies za uwa Department of Education. Fanele singa i brusha brusha eibon. Si chelis great, once ufuna i extension or babo nukuti uwewa extended wa ngai, not more than two years. Akiri uza uextendedwa. If uso fanele ndambuxingia iya uhuhingia nawe eganu. Uza banopesa lmosaniti ubenktisha luvunii. So anfunoguti amkesiti ehi kutuanti za utatwa ndabe dina seventy of organza.
So let us.
Uzo utatwa ba ti makfika ngomlatu uza ukaundang.
Let us, let us just clarify this point. The HOD has mentioned when they say they will accept you as you are from the ECD level, we just want to highlight that there are policies that govern the functions and operations at the Department of Education. So when you are integrated into the Department of Education, please note that those policies, you will be blinded by such policies and be expected to comply with them.
Schools Act, that's why it is important for immixed generation in your projects or whatever a project or NPOs and NGOs and is for me shy. So that beko is second layer leadership. Ukono uki alaba bangena yo ba understande wena, ba uguazu uki take over, whether it's your child or your grandchild or whoever, ngoba ni funa, but irilito of the matter, uzikona nje, i policy act and all this stuff, esizo fanele u Department as landu as exercise out of all what we are saying or all what Department is saying. Ngoba fanele nuxulu uki, HOD i Department. Tinasixye zila itafileni sili parlament. Elibona ayoli chongo uki Department lekokele uwa yoyenza konana ofariyenska.
There is also a schools act that outlines all proper procedures that ought to be followed. Every department, this is normal in every department. The HOD can attest to that. There are protocols that ought to be followed and they will apply. So let us be clear on that.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair, for that clarity. I think, I think when the Department of Education say they will take them as is is because they don't want any confusion. Then they will start the process to ensure that people are well trained, those that are not trained, because they're very clear in terms of the qualification. If you have to be a practitioner within an ECD, they've benchmarked with other countries. In our meetings, at times we do have meetings with both ministers and MECs and so on. They've indicated that they've benchmarked with other countries in terms of how ECDs are run. In other countries, they need their seven years qualification if you want to be a practitioner in an ECD. So that's why they're saying they will take them as is and then they would start then to introduce and show compliance with the legislation that Honorable Chair is referring to. Thank you very much, Honorable Chair, Honorable Members. Thank you.
Siabonga stalo onpegile nama lungo alonpegile. Uma sitige umenyango uwe zemfundo, uyoba tata uwa ECD benjengo ba benjalo. Senzela njugu tiku ngabikuwa nukutitega lana, ucho tiku nomtoto titegile lana. Bayo utatwa benjengo ba benjalo, kotoma sobefiga emnyangueni uwe zemfundo, besiya alakale ngobo yokeshana. Ini ngizim Afrika manje sifunuku chi yamsanike ne kopelulama nyamazu ngokondene ne ndabake iye ziku.
Yeye gele hod akulume sumpratisisa lak. Ngoba ngoku uya mpitisa agazu nokutasukume ofarallale and ge i protocol uya yazma ukulumile ulreko ngke. Kotage mia gele nje for now, just for today.
HOD, stop, stop what you are doing. Don't help her to know what to say. She will speak as what she has to speak. Don't practice with her.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair and Members.
Ngibonga kakulugusalo.
It's just two points that I just wanna cover. In the vaccination, when they were asking which practitioners who have not vaccinated, are they going to be accepted?
Maile na na banda banga konyewe, uki ingabe aba fundisi aba banga konyewe bazo wangedwa yini.
Chair is to just emphasize what, what HOD has said and yourself, that you know we will move them as they are and as far as we know right now, even in education, there are teachers that have not been vaccinated and we have not heard anything about, you know, them being expelled. So when they get there, they will conform to whatever standards that the Department of Education.
Ngimanenje ngifunoguzelela lokho okshuo u HOD uki bazo tatoa njengo ba benjalo, umage sebefiga la paya pambili bazo lande la imu bozoguti ba uzo wenzwani ngabo.
That also applies to the children that will be moving to the same department.
Loko klanganisa ne ngane ezobe ifutukisela emnyangueni ufa nayo.
There was also another one that was speaking to unqualified or unskilled people.
Yebona ge that one, that one. Yoku tinabantu ana uzo ohamba kanjani. Awuzu utatumdanu no six months, umxlanganise nomtwanu only five years. Yebonamos, ngoba that's the mistake that we always do.
On the matter that the same procedures will be followed with the children, you will never mix the kids who are not of the same age.
Inesari, ne preschool, ne foundation phase, zisindwensukele. Fanele ge ngoku bani, but mina HOD, what I would like to say to you, we are fanele nipinde nisbizes inkuliso. Inkuliso ez ECDs keniba bizama practitioner. Oh, ngeni wahlanganise konon ngakaka ngakale. Or they are just having ingenge uki uzo chini makute uzo chini. And they don't have information enough about this. In most of the provinces, nala AKZN, we have discovered that.
The nurseries, the preschool and the foundation phase, they are not the same. HOD, you have to call some of the people who have the ECDs around here and have a meeting and talk to them and discuss because there are some few points that are not properly understood about that.
Thanks. The next point was around. The next point was around the unqualified or unskilled people that are working in the NPOs managing people with disabilities.
Omunye umbuzo uye waba konna u maile na na banda bapila nukuba zega abasibenza ngapantzi uwa ma NPO?
Okay, in this one, may I indicate that, you know, when these NPOs starts, it's usually people that start them out of passion, right? But when we come in in terms of ensuring that they comply with norms and standards, that way we come in in terms of training and scaling those who do not have skills. So if there are NPOs that probably Umpagati is noting that there are things that are not okay, we are requesting them to come forward and indicate so that we go to those facilities. However, our social workers, they do go out in terms of conducting, monitoring and evaluation.
Uma sisa la pa maile na nama NPO, banda baningi uma be kalisa lezi ikungo, bagwenza ngoba benotando ngaloko. Ezinyikatabazu uki izipindlela ehi fanele, ngume uki baylandele uze bamiswe ngogo mteto. Ngako oson tlalaga she baye baphume bahame baye bandu yini uzu baguazu uki babasize na bo ngakoskala bandu uki bezenga pambili uzu baguazu uki ba tholusizu.
The last one is around the issue ama volunteers. Just to indicate that we no longer promote involuntaryism. However, all people that are working in the, in the ECD sector, we also call them practitioners. Thank you.
Ogwe ogulandela yo gumaile na nama volunteer asa kutasi utabalama volunteer. Bonka bandu begate be ama volunteer sba tata njenga otisha balezi ikungo.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can I give over to the honorable members just the telepos finish uki? Been raised and also nogunigesa some advice because you remember some of us sikesa zulaklizinu. Digenda bani inkuliso name divulayo. Digenda bayfahunda yoku chindi begwa social development. Digenda bangu ticha yongele process sikesa sahamba lizinu. So basa oninigesa just a moment because the department has said a lot about what you think you want to. Akuvale kanga ge loko, basasa konoba nangi nizuluku ti bangoboba. When we go out, unago uktukrebe one of them uye u introducea and also ask uki ungaya upinenke ngalena so na so na so.
I will hand over to my colleagues, the honorables, so that they can also have their input. Probably they'll give you advices on other things because I myself have had an ECDs, I've been involved as a teacher, so they also can give you some of the advice. And when we leave here, probably if you still have something to say, you can grab some of the people who are speaking here. Maybe you want something or you want them to help you with something. When we go outside, you can just talk to one of them so that they can give you necessary help.
Yeah, bayirankis fuelseter.
Thank you very much, Chair.
I just want to check with the community. Are you happy with social services?
Ikwenetge gusekerma okbe ri gemeenskap, eshule gelikag met mahatskaplike diinste.
Are you happy with social services? Let me see. Let me see.
Ne jablile yini ngomnyango uwezoktutusogompa Gati.
Ah, I see very few hands.
Bezani zanda, baparamisa ba jablile ba tumnyango, woktutungusogompa Gati uku bakale baparamisa.
I think it will be the first district that we see so many people that are truly happy.
Siakalu kbonu kfigesfunda zwin la, bonka bandu bejablile ngalo emnyango.
Maybe they shy.
Mxampeba namashoni.
I think I want to commend the department. I'm glad to see such a lot of social workers since we have shortage in the country.
Ngithanda ugbonga umnyango, futi ngime osontlalaga she abakona njengo ba sine intselele yosontlalaga she ezwin.
And I think I'm grateful because the fact that the people don't raise anything today, it says that somehow they are doing a good job.
Uki namuhla bandu abana zizi nde inanga bayshoyo. Kusuku ti lomnyango wenza galeka kuulu.
To be a social worker is not an employment, it's a calling.
Uku ba uson tlalaga she aguona njumsebenzuku ubizo.
And at least I can see this social workers have find their purpose in life.
Uki ngabono uki labo son tlalaga she baytholile injongo yopile.
Thanks for caring for our people.
Siabonga ngonnagege la abantu beitu.
I have seen they say they're happy with the service render.
Ngibabonile besu uki bayachabula ngayinkonzone intiza inbale telazona.
However, I did hear Chair say that the MEC must call a meeting with the ECDs. I think it's important that the MEC must also bring into the department also so that the people can understand the process and get clarity on all the questions because these questions raised, the Department of Social Services cannot answer, but yet the Department of Education must answer it.
Ngizwile ushalo esu uki gumele u MEC abize umxlangano uzu baguazu uki bapendule imbuzo umenyango uwe zetlalaga she nama umenyango uzektutukisogobantu umxlangano uzu baguazu uki basizani.
And one thing I'm sure that we need to raise it with the Department of Education because all over in this public hearings that we were having in this province, we hear the need for ECD for disabled people and centers for disabled people because we need to accommodate that people in our society.
Ngifunoguti, ngikulume nama umenyango uwe zemfundo. Ngoba uzu zonki funda esie guzo. Siyesezu i kalazo abantu be kala maile na noguti kube nama center nomi ikungo zabanda bapila nukuba zega, nama sebe ne ndawo ogulula ngabantu abapila nukuba zewu uki baguazu uwi. Nomasebe ne ndau ogulula ngabantu abapila nukubaze oguti baguazoo ifinyelela.
And I can also hear there's a need for for trained E C D practitioners to work with these disabled children.
Futi ngizwe tiwa gunesti ngo futi soguti kubbe notisha aba shiwe. Futabane konolo oguti baguazi ukisa lezi ngane ey pila nukubaze.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Ngyabonga kakulu ushalo.
To have a bite, honorable.
Obanu munya funu kuluma umxanishwa uma sang. Ngyabonga ushalo.
Thank you, Chair.
Nami ngifunu kswaliso bonka kulu ngo oguti eh umnyango wesok tutu kisogompagati la muzenyati wesemsebenzwa o ngendela. Ekulisa gangango gutabando aba akukunja aba funu gusho. Gu 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 loko bonisoguti eh eh umsebenzwa stesi funu gwenza mparatini siyawenza. Ngi ngibonga kakulu eh eh mparti we wesfunda zwe sawazulu Natal.
I also want to express my gratitude for the fact that the Department of Social Development is doing its job in Umzinyati area. Everybody is satisfied, nobody has any complaint. So that just shows that the department is working. Thank you very much, H O D, for the work your department is doing in the province.
Na ngijogane eh eh ngifunu gubuza nomamtsampe gukpaola. Koda ngabantu kumbuza kundenu gukpaola.
I have a little question or comment, but I think it is a comment.
Kula aba abezilela na abebese thulaktina na smparatini. Kushe bonke mangaposis nomamtsampe gusala babili kpele. Bonke ba mabamba gu gulumsebenza ba wenza. Ngi sakta du buzoguti kitalwa inlo kumpela lumsenza wenza usemku kulu kutebe ngabebe lokbe bambele. And no guazoguti guzo pele ninlokamba.
All the officials who came forward from the Department of Social Development, when they introduced themselves, they referred to themselves as acting in various positions. If most of them, if not, if if not most of them, maybe two didn't say they were acting. My question is, why? Why are they acting? Because the job, the work that they are doing seems to be a very important one.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. And thank you very much to the community for for coming today. I just wanted to say that to those of you who didn't make any comments today.
Ngi bonka kakulu gushalo na bobonga banda aba be kona. Ngi funu oguti ngikulume nala ba abanga bangga novulu abona mula.
That you still have an opportunity to read through the documents and make submissions. Because we are still going to a couple of provinces from here. So the process is not complete. Which means if you didn't have any comments today and you still have comments at a later stage, please do still submit those in writing.
Oguti ni enagazu oguti ni thole i skribielo somteeto. Ngako nisazo funda nizwema ilanalu mteeto. Ngako asakre di mayela na nalululhelo. Uma nisafuna oguti ni fagoktile na ninkulume nsene lungelenjalolo oguti nengawenza loko.
And then I just wanted to add to what my colleague, the honorable Ari, said. Wherever we've gone in this province, the issue of children and people with disabilities are a big concern.
Ngi funu oguti ngisho lokho okshua u zaguetu ulizela kshilo. Mayela na neingane ey pila nukubaze. Oguti lendo isayindo ey ntselele kule.
So H O D, I just wanted to remind you that when you do go back to the office, that we do highlight this matter with our colleagues in the Education Department. But also, H O D, I wanted to say yesterday, you made a comment to say that in Kwasulu Natal, we've got a social worker in every ward.
Ngi funu gusho lapa gu H O D oguti. Ngi kala oguti lokho ugumukisela pa umnyango wesemfundo. Mayela na nalesis kalazo za banda aba pila nukubaze.
And you even said that in bigger wards, we've got up to three social workers.
Uye wati izolo gui wote ngaline unoson tlalakale aba kona. Wama nyama wote yuwebe noson tlalakale aba tatu umagnenzeka.
So I just wanted to appeal, as much as we say municipalities must come closer to the people and social development must close, come closer to the people. These social workers in our communities must be very accessible to our community members at all times.
Ngi funu gusho oguti njongo bushilo oguti umnyango wesok tutu kisogwa banda kumelo ubesetu uzena banda. Nomnyango wesemfundo kumelo ubesetu uzena banda. Nala boson tlalakale genabu kumele ba besetu uzena banda. Futi gubelula ubafi nyelela.
So that when there's issues of children who are abused, issues with people with disabilities, any community issues, that they are the first port of call.
Oguze u ma gune inga ey mayela na noklu nyezwa we ingane. Nomma unapateki kale we ingane. Nomma uyutabalenga ne pila nukubaze. Gubelula ngabo oguti baguazogu ifinyelela laboson tlalakale okulume ngabo.
But thank you very much for your time today. Thank you very much.
Ngyabonga kakulu. Ngeskati seno namulha. Ngyabonga ushalo.
Thank you, Chair.
Mina le ngifunu gugusho oguti gu H O D. Beniti sikesa figa we nyinda la A K Z N e Jozini. Nkela onati onayoti bananobo social worker na le e Jozini. So that lendo sibona la, sibone ne se Jozini. Singa iboni la, nala spuma kona jpele, sibone the whole K Z N.
What I want to say to the H O D is that we've been to some other areas like A Jozini. So we would urge you, H O D, to go to Jozini as well. So that what we see here is also reflecting in the I Jozini area.
Singa thoko sakakulu if onaya lapa. Because this is those a singa kjeela ngakutiseza A Jozini nyabo.
We will be very happy if you can go there. Because we will just conduct these random, unexpected visits without having to inform you there.
Okay, it goes. Okay. All right. By the looks of things, a dilemma. So. Ngi oguti. Ngoku siskati soguti umechi asbulale. Ngoguba lapa asbulale naye. Ngoguba lapa nokuba nibeyi good audience country. Ni 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 zole, ninka vinandweni ngi okted. Mara mxaambi u H O D upagamisa isanla ge simneke azee.
By the looks of things, I think right now we are finished actually. But we'll, I think, Mrs. Jane has something to say. Maybe we can give a chance to say something and thank everyone maybe.
Thank you very much, honorable Chair, honorable members, numpagati. Thank you for their questions and comments. We we want to respond to the question by honorable Masango with regard to a number of officials that are acting.
Sibonge kakulu gubaxonishwa noshalo. Ngi funu oguti ngipendule umbuzo o kulunye u mama uma sang. Mayela na noguti gungani guno gunamabambela amaninangaga.
We experienced a budget cut with regard to the compensation of employees. That's why we have quite a number of officials that are acting. So what we did, we identified officials that are competent to actually assist us by acting in those positions so that work continues despite the challenges that we have as a province in terms of a budget cut.
Siyesaba noguti gungishi swey isabelo umalisetu. Ngako siyesa guazoguti sitole aba banda ba ngakua zoguti ba size emnyango wenu etu. Aba ngakua zoguti bahambi sani naleso sabelo mali esina so ngaleso skati. Oguzumsebenzwa na uguazoguti ukubegele pambili.
But currently, we are doing our best to reprioritize so that we do fill some of the positions. Some of the colleagues are those that passed on because of COVID nineteen and so on. So but we're doing our best to try and manage that. Thank you very much, honorable Chair, honorable members.
Godwa senza oksemalini etu oguti sugazoguti sivale lezo ikeu eziko na. Nomma eziesa ba kona, ezinyeziesa banngela ulalake la goza wetu. Ngenga I S for i COVID nineteen. Godwa sizamo oguti senze ngoksemalini etu.
Thank you.
Don't worry, H O D, says a pendula loko wi oversight. Yekela wenamalu gashala oversight everywhere and everything.
Don't worry, H O D, you are still going to answer that.
Sizakuza again lombozo oguti why ekti sangatikse hulu wo theaterla.
Don't worry, H O D, you still gonna answer that to the Oversight Committee. We will ask you that question again so that you can answer that why this place seems like a theater.
Upindege wenage ulhalile sidi o ulhalango oguti COVID ini ini sawa yekela.
So that.
Yazu oguti kutidishala kanchan inidwes kanchan.
So that you can play that song that you were playing that because of COVID or because of that and that, then you can answer and then you know how we'll deal with you about that.
Umeche in honorable manga ye, all the way from northwest. Simnekeze owi thuba lo oguti as asbulale. Kunesanje entisbona. Godwa u malu u komba itu amusthe akupinda pendula la. Angasuzo pinde ipige manje. Yamitanda because we tell mina akuneki pinda pendula la.
I will give the lady a chance to say something because she has raised a hand.
Nangoke, umazid. Susi mask.
Remove your mask, please.
Nyakoli sukpinda kota manje angsezino E C D.
I'm sorry to repeat myself, but.
Senkiza njenge member, ewu community caregiver.
I'm coming now as a community caregiver.
Community caregiver wa wa social development kanyi nama C Y C. Sinescalo ngithangi kulu kisela kukukoni parliament.
As community caregivers and members of C Y Cs, we've got a complaint. I just wanted to put it out there.
Umteto sese yelo wasa South Africa uti umsebenzi ohola kanganimega. Maga hola utwende randi pe e awa. Godwa tinasi hola u two thousand. Genyanga two thousand three hundred. Guza kanchan ama amanyama community caregiver ango aha health ahola three point five. Futu yeso masain tlalwen zoguti bay three point eight. Kanti tinasi sabagupi asbona basa South Africa steluwas na tutanga bagupi ngayibonge.
According to the constitution of the country, if you are being paid less, you should at least get twenty rennes per day. But for us, we're only getting two per hour. We should able, should be able to get twenty renne per hour. But for us, we are getting two thousand three hundred per month. How is that possible? How is that fair? For other departments like the Department of Health, they are getting three thousand five hundred. And you can hear that that is about to be increased in the near future to three thousand eight hundred. I just wanted to ask as to why is that?
Ayange keni pendule department on that.
I cannot answer.
Mara seni zabakupesa nifumane ilendo bati salary pay sheet. Nifumane i i izi do ezilungelela nisayo. Godwa ge asimneke H O D or whoever odi gishana nadendu.
I cannot answer on behalf of the department in terms of that. But what I can assure you, you are going to be placed on parcel now. You'll get a salary pay slip. But let's hand over to someone, to some official from the department who can respond to that.
Thank you very much.
Ngyabonga kakulu.
Chairperson and honorable members, in response to the question, let me start by saying, when we started this program of community caregivers, we had community caregivers that were employed in the N P Os that were funded by D S D. And then there were those that were employed by the N P Os that were funded by Department of Education. Then a cabinet resolution was taken in this province to integrate them so that they are paid through parcel and be placed under E P W P program. So they are under that, they've been under that E P W P program since since then. Then a resolution by bargaining council was passed, which indicated that those that are from the Department of Health, they must be elevated to a position called community health workers. So they are no longer community caregivers, they are now community health workers. And then their salaries were, was raised to three thousand five hundred. Unfortunately, that resolution excluded the ones that are from the Department of Social Development. They remained in the E P W P program. So they are still under the E P W P program and they are still paid in line with the ministerial determination. Thank you, Chair.
Ngi iyabonga kakulu si shalo oshonpegile namalu ngashonpegile. Nithando oguti akisilano oguti ge lava aba sibenza njenga ma community caregivers. Eh bay tanga no engenzinzu oso. Sinaba nyega aba khaswe umnyango wesok tutu kisogompagati. Besegesiba naba nyega aba khaswa umnyango eh wa wa wesemfundo eh aba solheliweni wwe E P W P. Godwa ge gwenzi wege isingumo eh soguti ge lava bebe sibenza mnyango wenu wesempele. Banga bebe sabizwa ge ba bizwe nama health, community health workers. Eh ibo ge aba holo three thousand five hundred labo. Godwa ge waseguti lava ba semnyango wenu oktutu kisogompagati ge. Bonaga basebisa langemo vage besegu lololosheloge olbizwa ge E P W P.
Sorry, Chair, probably just to add, oguti this is not the matter for this province only. And National Department is kind of coordinating in terms of trying to engage and see what can be done for our community caregivers as well.
Linkinga giyione alisisfunda zwe gupela. Nala pa kuzuelonke gusane ingo kona pe kubega yokupegu sklazululo soguti ge. Linkinga krazulaga kanchan.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Sibonga kakulu. I have forgotten your name.
Oh, Mamutuli, sibonga kakulu. That was a brilliant question, but eh in all these provinces, zazangbozo umbuzo onchenga.
Thank you, Ms. Lutuli, for your answer. In all these provinces, you haven't been asked such a question, but.
Mara nati usnetzile because I imagine kaben dizawbuzo abendiza pendulan tini. Endiza pendulan titi ey na Ansi Department. I will ask that from the department, but today, even the member of parliament, I'll be able to explain. We begayakaka.
You have explained it nicely. You have helped me also. You you were able to explain to the people because I, being the member of the parliament, I didn't know. I wouldn't know what to say. I would say I'm not, it's not my department, but you have explained it in a very nice way.
Bapanze bakusha basu isana ba ndu umpagati. Oguti enye ba ibize community health workers, enye ba ibize community caregivers. Yabona nje mosiafana lento tinasi azakale oguti worker, health worker or the community eh eh hamba nuklanganisa nana lento ka E P W P. So thank you ever so much. I think it's a katalue ifumuntu funipindwe ngoba namangpuma pafalupindu ipinde kale kale. Oguti gwenzi kela. Mara, as I have said, oguti exactly upesa uzao uzao klanganisa nana lento.
Once ungenekwi system kupesal. Akuzuba no muunyo fumana some other thing. No muunye afumane yindo, all the practitioners, sisa bakui level one. Remember payana, kupesal ubakui levels. Level nine, level twelve, vara vara level one njalo njalo. So yongele lento lena, maseni intacritwe gale gale isa uklunga. Ona ona kufanilenge si zamukuti eh uksisilo wasi. Aha, mababoteli. Na ni ge siyakelu kuti masipumala. Yongele information and the documents. Niba ngetise abantu and photocopy for them. Niba explainele kuti kutwani ngalesi sijonispet. Ungati ai manba yateta ey batetile, ey bateta futi bateta too much. Angas no kuti bebete, bebete etaji.
So once you've been enrolled on the parcel process, everything will be smoothly. You won't have any department getting more money than the other one. So everybody will get the same amount, so it will be just smooth. But when you all leave here, just go and explain to the people and try to help them a little bit. Don't just say, those people were there, they were talking, they were saying lot of things. Try to explain nicely to the people.
Otherwise, we thank you ever so much. I'm giving over to Ms. Jane Asmonye. Eh sizo ukunuka ngitala ni volunteer for untandazo. Over ukututuko utewana ye elapa. Entzongi zinto sa kesisomulege kile today asfalele.
So we'll hand over to.
Thank you.
May sit down. We'll hand over to Honorable Mangani, who will close for us and will ask a volunteer for a prayer. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Chair.
Ngiabonga kakulu ushla lo.
Chokosaka kulu ukusvagashiswe tu la sisa ngabola.
I'm happy also about our audience because we are here for you.
No ma ankulumanga njeh ngocha persone sa shilo. Eh kona imininingwa ni leninga isabenzisa kutini ifige lendo nifunu isho kuti.
Although you didn't have a lot to say, but probably you've got something that you can say so that all whatever you were supposed to get from this can be taken to the people.
Ngiabonga kakulu mpati wa la especially umzugulu la enyu kase. Menale enyu kase na ai la etati. Eh wagakanyile.
Thank you.
Chokosaka kulu nginboni lenboni staff. Kaloku staff ifa sikho ngabe singa figanga la. Because ngaboba lungisizinze la kuti kutini kutini. So siyambonga kakulu staffu se tu sase parliamente.
I would like to thank everyone because actually I'm a granddaughter of this place. So I would like to thank everyone and the staff because some of you, you have fixed the road so that it's nice so that we could travel to this place.
Sibongena labase provinceini especially nabola baschela bakuluma ba translator. Eh ngayonge lamalanguji name woba ngiyabula bulaba yaguazu translate.
And also, I want to thank everyone from the province and the interpreters because even when I speak my language, which is Sitzonga, they are able to understand it and translate for me.
Nabola baskomba ngama, ngama niti ngama camera. Imidi ya etu yonge la na labaspuma nabu parliamente ni na labasbatola la siyambonga kakulu.
I'd like to thank the media and everyone and the ones from the parliament. We thank them very much.
Hee, sinboni HOD, ne staff, eh san sinboni nibanigi kakulu na zana stusa.
Thanks to the HOD and your staff, you came in, your big numbers were even scared.
Stand akuti lendo sibone lela ngipinde pinde futi. Sibone na la beskesanya telako na la AKZ.
Would like to see the same thing that you did here in other places that we have been to here in KZ.
Netemba mina kutu uzoyenza woba sosboni sile la se hambe ko na kwezinyinda.
I have hope in you because you have shown us that in other places that we've been to, you've given us hope about your work.
Hi, nginboni futi ne na lamakoliwa.
I'd like to thank my colleagues as well.
Nabola abusolo ngonbakusa kuti bavalisumbulu loza bo ngiyababonga kakulu.
I always have to remind them that they must put on their mask. I want to thank them as well.
Nginbona kakulu eh honorable members.
I'd like to thank you all honorable members.
Eh yazu kubonga akpele abanye ba hey nduinga na ba yazu kubonga akpele.
To thank someone doesn't end.
Kuyapuma uti uti.
Always have something to say.
But mina nginbona kakulu siyachabula ne hambenga le emakaya. Nukuusho lukutolela eh nibanige na yole. Mininingwa ni yongele nihtolela sinbona kakulu nipugele kaya ni.
Pepele.
Ni pepele, ey.
I'd like to thank everyone.
Ni pepe, eh zele. Thank you very much.
Ngiabonga kakulu.
Mka la sissukume songe ke azee umuntu ngapambili kui maike asboni ngentrokoma avale. Injela ye tuge gale.
Eh mka la sivala melo. Siyabonga Baba weto ngweli. Siyabonga isewa ngosi ya Tuchia Su Christu. Tubelishla ngosi osipelo na noxala pansi. Gulungulu weto ngweli sekulume ngosi zindasitindempati ya geti Baba weto namantla. We want to thank you God for the honorable members that are here. Gulungulu weto namantla wange. Wukwonge ngosi sse kuluniwe Baba weto namantla. Wango kzo influen somteto otintabantuana. Tito weto ngweli. Wange ngosi kwenze nganfaneli dangontlela. Sibusu sse ngosi sashlugana. Gulungulu weto ngweli. We speak traveling messages as we go, all go back to our different destinations. Kunga binamuunye gulungulu weto ngweli. Ofelele wae ngosi entelele ngodu siktrenu sifigele. Sisakubega sizi ndla sifaga nama inputs sipuxlaga nepa gulungulu weto ngweli. Wange kasi taleka menelitela mfele Tuchia Su Christu ngosi etu. Amen.
Amen. Malbonwe. Asikotu kebatu imiti ngivaliwa.